So 5:00 PM, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If Clerk Segras could please call the roll if we have our scribes online. It's ready to go. Are you muted there, Mike?
Sorry, somebody is apparently outside who thinks they need to show up to the township hall for the meeting tonight. Who's on the agenda? I don't know who that is. So anyway, I was getting, I was dragged into that conversation trying to help that person find their way to our electronic meeting.
Right.
You wanted me to do the roll call?
If you would, please.
Anthony?
President.
Foster?
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Segras is here, Slavens.
Good evening.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Williams.
Hello. Mike, can we make an adoption, make a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of item G zero? Consider extending Slow's agreement.
I moved.
Support?
Support.
Thank you Diane. Roll call vote to approve the agenda with the modification of that.
Anthony.
Second.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm sorry.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segras die, Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. We have one set up of minutes for approval. We have a call for motion approved in minutes of August 11, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call vote, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segras die, Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Now it'd be a point in the agenda for any citizens' non-agenda item. If someone's calling in, they would like to speak to an item that is not on the agenda. Now would be the time to do that. And if you called in a little late, we do have, we have added the agenda to extend the Slow's agreement as an item to be considered this evening. So is there anybody who would like to make public comment for a non-agenda item at this time? Is there anybody who would like to make public comment at this time? Are there any raised hands, Mike?
I see none. I do see that we have a telephone listener. You can raise your hand by hitting star nine, I believe.
Okay, so if the person who is on the phone would like to speak, make public comment by hitting star nine on your cellphone, that will alert Clerk Segras that you would like to make a comment. Okay, moving forward, Treasurer Slavens, call for motion to pay the bills.
Mister Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Roll call on the motion.
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Slavens, Segras die, Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman. Williams.
Aye. We've got a single item on the consent calendar. If a clerk could read that as a single motion.
Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent cap presented with item C one, consider adoption of resolution for approval of application for additional MERS service credit by an employee. Pay it out.
Support.
Roll call vote on the motion.
And? Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segras, aye, Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Thank you. Now we're moving into the general calendar. First item up is item G zero. Consider extension of the Slow's agreement for 30 days.
Mister Supervisor, I move that the board authorize yourself to sign the formal license agreement with Slow's BBQ and any other documents necessary to complete the agreement.
Support.
Roll call vote of the ayes and ayes.
Do we want to do comments?
Yes, thank you for slowing me down.
There's public comment too.
Yeah. Is there any public comment on this item? Is there any public comment on this item?
I have, well, you had, John was going to read.
Okay, oh yeah, absolutely. That would be a good time to do that. We received two letters from restaurateurs in the, in the area that have opinions regarding this agreement. And John Anthony, Trusty Anthony is going to read them to us.
The first letter is from Rick Muck, R-M-U-C-K. Rick says, "My name is Rick Muck. My brother and I own the three food businesses in the Cherry Hill Village. We welcome the arrival of the Slow's BBQ for a trial and hope that they would consider adding a physical store in the village. We believe a healthy competition and adding more places to the village will help the area get more recognition and grow. However, it has come through our attention that the board is looking to continuously extend Slow's BBQ as well as invite other food trucks to set up more often. We hope the board will reconsider this action as it opens an unfair playing ground for us, for us brick and mortar stores that have high rent and overheads versus trucks that have no interest in leasing long-term to help this area grow to its real potential. Trucks that come in our select weekends during our prime times have no risk and are able to drive away when the season changes, and it is harder for us brick and mortar businesses to survive during these times. Our three businesses work very closely with the township of Canton, including sponsors set up at the annual Canton Liberty Fest and also Thursday night concert. We also have done many charitable operations with the township such as Hot Meal Mondays, which feeds 200 children that come from struggling households and many more of the great charitable programs our department and leisure services work so hard on. When businesses come in and take revenue without the intensive of staying long-term or giving back to the community, which we feel has hurt us all in Canton. If the board wishes to continue with the food truck operation, we would ask that at least the board consider charging a much higher monthly rent that could be used as the village's fund to help with the much-needed areas of concern such as additional parking and continuous common area improvement. We thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration. Thanks, Rick." The second letter that the board received is to the attention of Clerk Segras. "My name is Rich Constantino, owner of Rosa's Restaurant. I hear a lot on the news and all over the importance of equity and equality in our society, but especially how governments are treating its citizens and others. Not surprising it's been a topic of conversation for a lot of our customers and others living in Canton. I am very disappointed by the inequitable treatment that the township, including the board of trustees, is bragging about as it relates to the sweetheart deal it has given to Slow's BBQ and outside business to the clear detriment of Canton's businesses, many of which are struggling to stay alive. It's very, it's very disheartening for long, for lifelong Canton residents and business owners who generously support the community every chance we get. In addition to paying taxes and creating jobs in the community, when a foreign competitor is allowed to test the waters in Canton and to have its tests subsidized by the very tax dollars we pay, where is the equity? How is that equal? First, a little background on us. We are the Constantino family and we've been a part of Canton community for over 78 years. We've watched it grow into a great community. We opened Rosa's Restaurant and have been in business for 26 years and involved with the community for just as long. We did the Fireman's Spaghetti Dinner charitable function for 24 years. Myself and my fellow Canton restaurant owners that are invested in the community contribute and donate to the many Canton charities and school fundraisers. At the beginning of uncharted times, the COVID-19, I was able to donate food to our police and fire departments, and I am honored to have been able to do so. Throughout this pandemic, we've spent over $10,000 to make the restaurant safe and our patrons and workers, which is our number one priority, such as Plexiglas, dividers, outdoor seating, sanitation stations, and disinfectants, et cetera. We have forced to scale down to 50% occupancy, which doesn't mean you always have 50% occupancy. If you have a four top table and only two people come in and sit at the four top table, that will cut you down to 25%, which in turn means my staff has been cut down as well. During these hard times, we must pull together to take care of our community. It is difficult for a brick and mortar business to try and stay afloat. Businesses are suffering, but yet we still have to pay taxes, utilities, rent, employees, and food costs. Recently, Canton let Slow's BBQ food truck come to the Cherry Hill Village and only charged them $250 for a four-week trial period. The township is letting the Slow's BBQ use the old schoolhouse for restrooms, water, electricity, and the township is cleaning up the grounds. The $250 doesn't even cover the cost of toilet paper, let alone the cost of the township employees. I am already paying taxes, just like all the other brick and mortar businesses in the community, and now my taxes are paying for Slow's BBQ and out-of-town business to come in and use the facilities. If we had five of their customer families come to our restaurant, we could each bring a server back to work that lives in the Canton community, pays taxes, and would be able to put food on their table. All the brick and mortar restaurants owners in Canton invest here for long-term. They said that Slow's BBQ wants to test the waters here in Canton. While he is dipping his toes in to test the waters, all of us brick and mortar restaurant owners had to jump right in. We weren't able to test the waters, and now we are looking for a life raft so we don't drown. We're here for duration. We just can't disconnect from the electrical box and drive down the street to another location. Competition is good for you. It keeps you honest as long as you're paying on the same, playing on the same playing field. They are not paying taxes, electricity, water, sewage, or even for the cleanup crew. P.S. They said the food truck would help bring businesses to Cherry Hill Village, businesses such as Marcano's. I have an email from Rick, who owns Marcano's, regarding the impact of his business. From what I understand, much of the parking he relies upon for his customers was taken by people parking for long periods of time waiting in line at Slow's while he had very few customers. Slow's isn't raised the pie for the village. It sunk the other brick and mortar, tax-paying, job-creating businesses. As the township considers extending the Slow's sweetheart deal, I have to wonder, is all the talk about equity and equality for real or just lip service? I would hope you elected officials have more than a drive-by attitude about the importance of Canton's small businesses, but actions speak louder than words. And so far, the Slow's sweetheart deal has been deafening with all the wrong messages. We concur with the later Rosa's Restaurant, Crow's, Marcano's, Polarmos, Rusty Nail, and Spoon's Place signed the letter.
That represents the, the public comment. I don't know if there's any other hands that have been raised since, and it was Maraschino's Restaurant that he was referring to in the letter. Rich Mox, so it'll be there.
I see no additional hands raised on the list.
Okay, very good. Any board comments, trustee comments or questions? We have Jade online as well as Greg. I think Greg's here as well. One of the, the question, yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Well, finish what you were going to say.
Well, just the, in terms of the, the value of the use of electricity and water, Greg's team did look in that, look at that today. He believes we were covered in the 250, but there have been two changes that have been made to the document that we're considering to extend for 30 days. The first change, and Kristen Kogle, correct me if I'm wrong, first change was increasing the fee from 250 to 500. The second change was eliminating Friday night service and going to Saturday, Sunday only. I believe those are the only two changes. Is that correct, Kristen? Yes.
Um, well, I would just say that, first, let me say that those restaurants that wrote in, I'm big fans of their restaurants. I've been to all of them and, and I understand what's going on with the pandemic. It has stressed them terribly and I, I, I worry about them. So definitely. I'll also say, I'm, I've had Slow's Food. I haven't been to the truck, but I've been in Detroit and had it and have enjoyed their food. I'm, I am a fan of, of the concept of food trucks. I, I look forward to the rally on Ridge every year. I'm sorry, we couldn't do that this year with 15 food trucks that we bring in. Um, I looked at this when we approved it the first time as a test, as a pilot, to see if it could be successful, to see what the issues were, work out the kinks, see if it should be stopped or expanded, and also something to sort of brighten up the summer a little bit when so much has gone wrong this year in the world. So I, I think that that was a good thing to do. Um, but I personally don't think that we need to expand the test. I think we need to take a look at it. And I, what I would like to see is sort of the proper organizations in, in the township come together and take a look at what it would be to put together a food truck program, one that is fair to all, one that would work. You know, there's been different models in different towns around us. I know Ann Arbor had a piece of land. It wasn't township-owned. It was privately owned, and they were permitted to put food trucks on there, eight or 10 of them. And, but I'm pretty sure they found a model probably that they paid taxes, either through the landowner paying taxes and some other type of fees or, and, and they, of course, the landowner would pass those down to the food truck operators. So I'm probably not going to vote to extend it. I, I, I love the food and I think it's been a fun thing to do. But I do have concerns about how, the impact. And if we're going to do it, I think we need to be a little more mindful about how we do it going forward and maybe create a real program. Get different parts of the community involved in, in studying it and then create something that no one would object to. So that's just my thoughts on it.
Any other comments, questions? Anne Marie, please.
Thank you. It was very, very compelling letters. Thank you for reading those. And I do agree with Steven, what Steven said. Right now, we're going through some tough times. We know our businesses are struggling and it was a test. And maybe we could look at in the future, doing something like this and having our own restaurants have a food truck, you know, doing something so that they get more business rather than bringing someone in from the outside. I can see doing something like this for special occasions, but I agree. Right now, with the way our businesses are struggling, I think we need to support them right now and look at doing something else in the future.
Anne Marie?
I'm going to disagree with Anne Marie and Steven. I think the Slow's food truck has been a positive for the community. I've seen a lot of people in the community be really excited that we have it. I'm happy that we increased the fees, which I view as a form of paying tax to the community. It's a fee or, you know, a tax because they're only going to be operating eight days out of the month in this community. But like I said, I think it's a good thing and I think our residents were really excited about it. I do think that we should put together a food truck policy for the future, but I don't know if there's ever going to be a way to make everyone happy.
Diane, were you raising your hand? Yes.
Yeah. I just want to make a couple comments. Certainly, we appreciate our businesses. They have helped, stepped up and helped. This food truck is just a temporary thing and it has. It's excited people. You know, people are stuck in their homes, so it's really brought people out. I'm happy we did it. It is a temporary thing. And I do, I appreciate the letter very much. And I do appreciate how our businesses have stepped up, but this is just a temporary thing. We have increased the fees and they are going to be measuring the water usage. So they will be paying for the water for the, the, for weeks that they are here.
Any additional comments? Mike, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, I, the letter from the existing businesses was fairly compelling. I, prior to being elected clerk, managed restaurants, and I understand the challenges in the food industry. It is not an easy industry to make it in. A substantial number of restaurants don't make it out of their first couple of years. And, and that's because the profit margins on food aren't that good. I do know that one of the benefits of being a brick and mortar is typically have a liquor license and so therefore the profit margins on alcohol are substantially higher. So I definitely have some concerns with the notion of trying to compare brick and mortar restaurants to food trucks because I don't, I think it's apples and oranges to some degree. But I do appreciate the impact to small businesses that COVID-19 is having. It's definitely changing people's behaviors and that's part of the reason why I think we wanted to pursue this. If I remember correctly, was the notion of having the opportunity for to go outside, food options for Canton residents so they could continue to spend money and participate in that. When Slow's initially came to the township, I got excited and that's because, you know, Slow's is a destination. It's been a destination spot there, Facebook. They have 55,000 people who have liked their Facebook page. And we announced the temporary program, thousands of people who don't live in Canton were talking about Cherry Hill Village. And that excites me because for 20 years, I mean, we'll find out in a little bit when we get into the meat and potatoes on the Cherry Hill Village district overlay, that for over 20 years, we have been trying to see Cherry Hill Village take off from a commercial standpoint. That has, it has failed. It has not happened yet. The businesses down there have been subject to constant turnover. The restaurants have been subject to constant turnover. We were talking about the coffee shop that just recently went out of business there as well. It has been tough for retail and commercial to make it in Cherry Hill Village because people, their behaviors haven't really embraced the village concept that we were trying to create or that the previous board and the planning commissioners were trying to create in Cherry Hill Village. I remember when I invited all of the municipal clerks from Wayne County to the Village Theater for our Association of Wayne County Clerks meeting, they were all saying, "This is so beautiful down here. I had no idea this place existed." Cherry Hill Village is like a really good secret that nobody knows about and it will stay a half-developed secret if we don't disrupt. And so I think one of the things I liked about Slow's coming down is it was free organic advertising for Cherry Hill Village and it worked. People were coming from Novi, Wicksum, Northville, Plymouth, people who probably weren't going to spend money going to dinner. Or people who were, if they were going to spend money, we're going to spend money in other communities. So I can relate or I can empathize with the business owners who feel like a dollar in Slow's pot is a dollar out of their pot. I don't necessarily know that I agree with that rationale. I'm excited or I'm happy that we are not subsidizing Slow's, right? They are paying for the metered water use. They are paying for any electricity that they are using. So any type of indication that we are would be a little disingenuous. And I am glad to see that we have increased the fee. And I know that Slow's is willing, is willing to pay that because a number of people have said they're happy being able to come to Canton instead of having to drive to downtown Detroit to get Slow's. Looks like if, I mean, I count four votes, it looks like now those people will have to drive to Detroit if they want to get the Slow's. And, and that's okay. I just worry that we might be losing a business partnership and an opportunity for the future that would potentially benefit Cherry Hill Village. But that will be okay. You know, we will, we, we can recover from that. It won't be that big of a deal. But it wasn't, it was, it was an exciting opportunity while it lasted. But I would be voting in favor of the contract extension.
Michael, or I'm sorry, Stephen?
I just wanted to add again that I'm for having food trucks in our community in a, in a way that is studied and measured and, and hopefully is successful. So I just think we need to take, take what we can from this experiment and even as early as potentially next spring, if we can put something together to open up something even bigger, that would be great. Just want to make sure it's fair and want to make sure that, that we, we've done it in a thoughtful way.
Greg, I'm going to ask that you take that assignment on in terms of looking at what, for example, I had quite a bit of experience food trucks lot over in Southfield. In fact, I took a whole crew from Canton there. Last summer, we all had lunch together. It is fun, so. If you take that assignment out and look and see if we want to develop a program for Canton, I appreciate it, Greg. The other thing is part of the development and success of Cherry Hill Village has been to start and stop the economy with the housing market. The housing market is, as we're all very much aware, is full steam ahead. Rooftops are being added. Cherry Hill Village is going to be built out in the next couple of years and there's going to be demand there for other things. When Slow's first made the phone call, I got very excited to look and come in, test the market, see what Canton might have to them. And now what I'd like to see them do is expedite any potential for brick and mortar, mortar to be long-term part of Cherry Hill Village. That would be amazing. They were also looking at property at another location in Canton as a potential. So we'll see where that goes. And Kristen Thomas, I'm sure will follow for all of us. Is there any additional comments, questions? Call for roll call vote. Are you going to go affirmative?
Anthony?
No.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
No.
Aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Williams?
Well.
Item G one? That's, I guess. Item G one, consider approval of bond authorizing resolution for 2020 capital improvements bonds not to exceed $16 million.
Supervisor, I hereby move to approve the attached bond authorization resolution for 2020 capital improvement bonds, limited tax, general obligation not to exceed $16 million for the purpose of defraying the cost of 2019, 2023 capital improvement plan.
Support.
In terms of a summary, the township intends to issue and sell limited tax, general obligation bonds which points to Act 34, Public Act 2001 of Michigan 2001, as amended to the amount not to exceed $16 million for the purpose of defraying the cost of forward approved 2019 through 2023 capital improvement plan. The notice of intent resolution for the issuance of bonds as was adopted at the December 10, 2019 board meeting. And I believe we have bond counsel on the line in addition to Wendy, if there are any questions or comments. An item we've seen a few times now. This allows us to just move forward with the issuance of the bond. Wendy, did you hear John's question?
I did not.
What the rate of interest is going to be on the bond?
Um, if, if we want to promote Bobby Benzinski and Eric McLaughlin on the two panels, they can talk about it, but based on conversation. But based on conversations that I had with our financial advisor, Bobby Benzinski, at this point in time, it looks like the maximum interest rate that we would get charged is about 2%. Bobby might want to talk to it a little bit more. Obviously it won't go to sale until about October 6th. That's the date that we're shooting for at this point in time. But interest rates are at an all-time low at this point in time. Bobby, I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit?
Thank you, Wendy. Good evening, everyone. Wendy's absolutely correct. The tax exempt market is extremely low right now, probably all-time low. If you were to market this bond issue this week, you would be hovering somewhere around the one and a half to 1.6% interest rate right now. So extremely favorable. We don't see interest rates increasing right now before the election. So hopefully there won't happen, there won't be anything in the market that causes rates to go up. But as you know, rates are very fluid. They move on a daily basis. And hopefully we can get this in the market quickly and secure very low interest rates.
This will be a fixed rate of around 2%?
Yes, we will sell the bonds. Right now, the game plan is the week of October 6th. Hopefully on October 6th, there will be a competitive bid sale, which many of your bond issues have sold that way. That means at a certain date, and I'm sorry, a certain time on October 6th, we receive the bids. We determine the lowest interest rate and make a recommendation to accept the lowest interest rate or reject the lowest interest rate. And at that time, the interest rate becomes fixed. Yes.
Go ahead, Emery.
So what was, what is the term again, Wendy?
We are going to sell them for a 10-year period, to mature over a 10-year period.
There are no other questions or comments at this time. Call for roll call vote on the item.
Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
I.
Graham Hudek?
I.
Slavens?
I.
Snyderman? Williams?
Hi.
Item G2, consider approval of 2020 budget adjustments.
Supervisor, I move to approve the attached listing of budget adjustments to the 2020 budget.
Thank you. There was Emery for support.
Diane?
Diane, thank you, Diane. The township adopted 2020 budget at the November 26, 2019 board meeting. And various adjustments have been made to it since then. At this time, I'm asking the board trustees to approve the attached budget adjustments for the 2020 budget year. The description of the budget adjustments is explained in the attachments. Also, we have with us Wendy, who can answer any questions or maybe specific directors. Any questions? Kind of a routine thing about this time of year. I see no questions. Call for roll call vote on motion.
Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
I.
Graham Hudek?
I, sir.
Seagres to I. Slavens?
I.
Snyderman?
I.
Williams?
Hi.
G3, consider memorandum of understanding for exploring regional water authority.
I'm going to do this in the form of two, one motion, supervisor. I move to approve the memorandum of understanding for explanation of a regional water authority and the expense of $13,000 and approve the following attached budget adjustment or amendment.
Support.
This has been a, an item that has been out there and talked about for the last couple of years. And it's finally, it looks like it's going to begin to come to fruition. So Canton Township, the Long, the City of Levonia, City of Westland, Charter Township of Northville, are all water customers of Great Lakes Water Authority, Gleewa. Combined total, that all communities spend in the year for water purchases from Gleewa is approximately $34 million plus. Canton Township has cooperated on various projects and programs over the years, including Conference of Western Wayne, and thus acknowledged the value of regional cooperation. With this in mind, preliminary discussions have occurred to evaluate the advantage of working together on the purchase of water from Gleewa for overall savings, which could start as soon as July 1st, 2021, and increase significantly in the future years with capital investment. Each community will fund the initial four months of the efforts by engineering, legal, financial experts as chosen by the group. Levonia is $14,999, Canton Township $13,000, Westland $8,000, Northville $7,000. The city of Levonia shall act as a judiciary community for the communities. After the initial phase, the effort committees will report out on viability, the anticipated savings and reconcile financial efforts. Any unused funds will be returned to the community on a proportionate basis contributed after the study is completed. So rest in Canton Township, the pony up $13,000 for our share of this study. And I can answer probably most questions that got us to this point. And also Jade is, will be leading for our community on this effort.
Plymouth Township was not included?
Yeah, Plymouth Township chose not to participate early on in the, in the earlier discussion. Didn't see benefit at this time for his or his community. Emery?
How did you determine how it was divided up the cost?
I think it's based on our water buy in, in, in millions of dollars. And if not, if it wasn't water buyers by population, and those two kind of flow similarly. Levonia is a bigger water user than $14,999. Canton is right behind them at $13,000. But I think it was, let's see. Note here that states how they did that.
Well, then, now this would include, is all of Levonia and all of Northville Township and all of Westland in this or just pushing a bit?
The entire communities, border to border. And, and part of the deal with Gleewa is they have to be contiguous communities, meaning being attached to one another. So the pipes can flow from one end to the next.
How long will the study take?
It's not answering Emery's question. It was based on water consumption by each community.
Thank you for the clarification, Dave. Stephen, you had a question?
Oh, Emery asked how long it was going to take.
They, they, I think are being extremely optimistic, thinking that we could enter into agreement by July of 2021. I believe that's a little aggressive. I don't, Jade, do you have an opinion?
I don't. I think it's aggressive as well.
My question was, have you, have you seen other communities group together like this and see benefit from doing it?
Absolutely. We did it with Latuah, right? When we joined together and then we built the water tower, then moved over to watch ours. But the waste treatment, we moved as a group off of the Wayne system to the Atlanta system. It's not a significant saving.
Do you know of others that have done it with Great Lakes water?
I believe Noka, Naka, I'm not saying that right. There's another group, Nakwa. Also in Ann Arbor, Washington County, there's some program with joint venture also. So it's not the, we're not the first ones to do this.
Okay.
No other questions or comments at this time. Roll call vote to approve the motion.
Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
I.
Graham Hudek?
I.
Seagres to I. Slavens?
I.
Snyderman?
I.
Williams?
Hi.
Item G4 is final site plan for Arbor Glen Site Condominiums.
Supervisor, I move to the board approve the following resolution. The final site plan for Arbor Glen Site Condominiums, whereas project sponsor has requested approval of the final site plan for Arbor Glen Site Condominiums on property located on the northwest corner of Warren Ridge Roads. And whereas Planning Commission reviewed the final site plan for Arbor Glen and voted six to zero to recommend approval of the request as it meets the design requirements of the zoning ordinance and condominium ordinance and is consistent with the plan development agreement for Arbor Glen. And now therefore be a resolved, the board trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the final site plan of Arbor Glen Site Condominiums on the tax parcels listed as proposed in the plan document subject to all applicable state and local development regulations.
Support.
Terms of a summary, the applicant proposes to locate 36 single-family residential site condominiums on approximately 36.02 acres located again at Warren Ridge Road. One entrance is proposed on Ridge Road on the south part of the site located about 400 feet north of Warren. And an emergency vehicle entrance is proposed on Ridge Road on the north part of the site located about 1675 feet north of Warren. The project sponsor proposes to pave Ridge Road from Warren to approximately 100 feet north of the southern entrance to the development. The project sponsor proposes to maintain 34% of the site or 12.92 acres as open space. Preserve over 700 trees, minimize clearing and grading along Ridge Road and plant several native trees along Warren Road and Ridge consistent with the natural beauty road objectives. Additionally, project sponsor will construct sidewalks along the west side of Ridge from Arbor Glen to Warren, including crosswalk, crossroad Ridge Road to connect the existing sidewalk network on the east side. Approval of the final plan development, preliminary site plan was granted by the Township Board of Trustees on November 12th, 2019. And I don't know if we have representatives for the project on the line. Or last time, like I think it went a little too quick again. Mike, do we have any public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item?
I see Michael Knowles with the hand raised. I imagine that is the.
Representative, yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it. So I will, I will promote to panelists, but I don't see any other hands raised.
Mike, welcome to the meeting. Is there anything you'd like to share with the trustees and public at this time? Mike Knowles? Mr. Knowles muted, Mike, can you tell?
Button might not be there. Hope he is muted now.
Okay, just let us know that he's there. That's fine.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Michael Knowles. I'm with the Umlaur Group representing Pulte Homes of Michigan. We're pleased to be before you again tonight. This is our seventh public meeting on this topic. This is our last stop before we're able to go to pre-construction meeting. We have all of our permits in place and we're very excited to move forward with this new development. We thank you for your prior support and hope we can continue to have your support this evening. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mike at this time? Seen this project before. Basically, no questions. I'm sorry, Emery, please go ahead.
Yeah, one thing that was brought up is that added sidewalks, that's always brought up in planning commission meetings because we're trying to connect the township. And one thing that this was a difficult area because it's Ridge Road is a natural beauty road. So they couldn't put sidewalks in there. So that still represents a challenge for people riding their bikes, but that was one thing that was discussed.
A question, it does say that they would construct sidewalks along the west side of Ridge Road. Is that correct then? Or you were saying they weren't?
Yeah, they were, they explained that they couldn't because it, in one, one part of it, because of the natural beauty and they didn't want to clear that area.
Yes, so the sidewalks will extend from the entrance, which is approximately 400 feet north of Warren Road. It'll extend down to south to, to Warren from the site. And there's also a crosswalk that will go across Ridge Road. We had originally proposed to also do a crosswalk across Warren Road, but the county would not allow us to put a crosswalk at that location. The reason the sidewalk doesn't go to the west is because that's a very big wetland complex there and it's going to be otherwise undisturbed.
Then you can't go north of the main entrance either.
North of the main entrance, there is a wetland complex. There's about, about 200 feet that is the Pulte property. And then there are a couple of outlots that front on Ridge Road. So that's not our property for a section until you get about 1600 or 1700 feet north of Warren. That's where the emergency access comes in, but it's a very narrow window. So that, that, that property that's admitted is, is not the Pulte frontage property, other than the wetlands that are not being disturbed.
It looks like there's a conservation easement over those wetlands.
Yes, there is. We have a Eagle Wetland Permit. There is a conservation easement that will be placed over all of the remaining wetlands on site.
Sorry about that, guys. Just let the dog in and out, so. We, seeing no other comments at this time, questions, roll call, vote on the motion.
Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
I.
Graham Hudek?
I.
Seagres to I. Slavens?
I.
Snyderman?
I.
Williams?
I.
Item G5, consider reading amendment appendix. Oh, good, good. Have a good night, Mike. Thank you for joining us. First reading of the amendment to the appendix A zoning of code of ordinance regarding dead Dukic rezoning.
Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of the proposed amendment to appendix A zoning the code of ordinance to the Charter Township of Canton is provided in the attached ordinance, which rezones tax parcels listed from R6, single-family attached residential to R4, single-family residential and table for consideration, the amendment for a second reading on September 8th, 2020.
Support.
Again, the individual that's involved with this project is Dave, Dave Bukas and Mike Bruce Michael. I don't know if they're online with us today if there are any questions, but the applicant has filed for a special land use and application for two-unit attached, single-family residential building pending the outcome of the rezoning application. So planning staff can review the plans and provide feedback to the applicant concurrent with the rezoning application. The allowed density of two-unit attached, single buildings in the current R6 is up to eight minutes per acre. And the allowed density of two units attached, single-family residential in proposed R4 district is up to 5.18 minutes per acre. However, some of the setbacks and separation distance for our four are lower for the two-unit attached, single-family residential buildings than compared to the R6. And I don't know, this may be one we have, I believe, planning was going to join us today if anybody has any specific questions. On this one, and also Jade may be able to help us with comments or questions.
Guess my question is, can we have that in English?
I did struggle with reading that there, so the.
It wasn't you. It was, it's very complicated. And I think it's probably simple what they're trying to do. I was just wondering what the, what the goal is here and.
We have somebody speaking in the background there, Michael, but so that was.
That was Jade asking, I think, if Patrick was on the line.
He's under Canton MSD.
Canton MSD, so I will promote him to panelists.
Hi, everybody. The main purpose for the rezoning from R6 to R4 is that the applicant will be eventually proposing a, an attached, single-family housing product with two single-family units attached to each other. And in the R4 district, it's less dense, so there's less density. However, some of the spacing is lower in terms of setbacks and building spacing. So there'll be down zoning, so to speak, from R6 to R4 to be less dense. But that R4 district allows the units to be put in a little tighter if they're attached to unit condos. So that's the.
So that's the main purpose for the proposed rezoning this evening.
Well, transit is less dense and potentially more green space because it's closer back.
Correct.
That's, that's what I read, Steve.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Any other comments or questions?
I did, Bruce, Bruce Michael is, I have promoted the panelists as well. If anyone has any questions of the project representative.
Seeing no questions at this time, call for roll, roll call vote, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seegerstein Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Item G six, consider approval of meadows of Cherry Hill Minor Plan Development District formerly named the Meadows of Canton.
Supervisor, I move that the board approve the following resolution, approval of minor plan development district for the Meadows of Cherry Hill. Whereas the project sponsor has requested approval of a planned development district for the Meadows of Cherry Hill on property located on the west side of Ridge Road between Salts Road and the I C corridor. And whereas the planning commission reviewed the planned development plan and plan development agreement and voted six to zero to recommend approval of the request as it meets the criteria for a planned development results indefinite benefit to the community and complies with the applicable site design requirements of the zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the board trustees, the charter township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the Meadows of Cherry Hill Plan Development District on the tax parcels listed as proposed by the plan development agreement and plan documents subject to all applicable state and local development regulations.
Support.
In terms of a summary, the applicant proposes to locate thirty-eight, single-family residential site condominiums on approximately fifteen point eight acres. Located on the west side of Ridge Road between Salts and the I P C corridor. The project density of two point four one residential minutes per acre is less than the maximum density of four units per acre. Perfect. Permitted in the village edge area of Cherry Hill Village overlay district. One entrance is proposed on the Ridge Road and the connection to West Ridge of State Sub Canton to the west is proposed to be an extension of Hesperus Drive. Cherry Hill Village Overlay District requires all projects be treated as planned development. So any project proposal on the site subject to the must be a PD plan development. Each planned development is required to demonstrate definite benefits to the community. And the project sponsor proposes the following five definite benefits. Maintaining thirty-two point three percent of the site is open space, which exceeds the current twenty-five percent requirement. Also preserving trees along the existing water course and preserving existing trees around the perimeter of the site. And I know there's been quite a bit of discussion behind the scenes, so I'm sure we will probably have some, some residents interested in talking on this. Mr. Castillo or other neighbors who may want to comment at this time.
I do not see, I have two communications from residents. One was from Mr. Castillo, who I do not see here. So I was asked to read these and.
Very good.
You like me to read them?
Yes, please.
All right, this is from Jim Castillo. Please accept this amended statement to convey the, if we are unable to attend this evening's board meeting and offer it in person. Ladies and gentlemen of the board of trustees, we are seeking to only eliminate six to seven lots and have the remainder sized appropriately. Integrity of the comprehensive master plan is at stake. How is squeezing thirty-eight sixty-foot lots in between acreage parcels and seven hundred dollar seven hundred thousand dollar homes on hundred-foot lots, good land use planning? The master plan indicates two dwelling units per acre as the right land use goal for this area of the township. Cherry Hill overlay and its intention or estate lots in the village edge accommodates that. Contrary to the staff report, the bulk of this development is a quarter of a mile from the core. Only the drainage basin is three hundred feet from core property lines. Property clearly lies in the village edge of the Cherry Hill Village plan. It is worth noting that section twenty-seven oh four states P D D's must be consistent with the Canton's comprehensive plan. Further subject subsection D five gives the township board uncontestable discretion to set the density of any P D D proposal. Your master plan is right and the zoning ordinance gives you clear responsibility and authority to implement it here. Legacy of Melissa McLaughlin and advocates for the Cherry Hill Village. There were, was a memorial service from Melissa McLaughlin a few weeks ago as a planning, planning commissioner and board member. She championed the creation of the Cherry Hill Village. It was noted at the ceremony by many that she was firm with developers in seeking what was best for Canton. When you were elected to serve as a board, I'm sure like Melissa, you took on the responsibility with the thought of contributing to what is best for the Canton community. I doubt you sought the position thinking, I can't wait to approve unimaginative developments with, that meet minimum standards. So what's best for Canton here? The Meadows, as proposed, would be such an indignity to Melissa and those leaders who supported the Cherry Hill Village efforts to do something unique. And what she sought for this special area of town. This is a P D D request. It is a discretionary approval. It is supposed to encourage innovation, offer something unique, some notable architecture, some special community amenities and some benefit to Canton. This proposal does none of these. No village-inspired architecture, no noble community amenity, keeping trees around the perimeter and land for drainage basins that can't be built upon. Is that, is that the standard for innovation? And as a matter of fact, this proposal is actually a dramatic step backwards for the community. It is notable in its non-conformity with the master plan and undermines the substantial investments made by area neighbors. By authorizing lots and homes that are but a fraction of the existing neighborhood. Be sure, we are not nimbers.
I'm back.
Nimby, okay. Nor speaking from a selfish economic interest, even at only sixty feet wide, we expect the developer to sell the homes at prices that exceed the value of our homes. Of our home. Leadership or governing out of fear? I've heard from some of you fear of lawsuit. We're not talking about denying the project. To achieve the appropriate density, we are talking about an elimination of only about six to seven lots. This is not a taking. This developer has had success a mile east in the Aspen Ridge subdivision, building and selling homes on eighty-five foot lots. What is leadership? Governing out of fear? Or governing by defending your master plan and standing behind what is best for the community? We urge you to impose conditions such that the Meadows P D D complies with the two-dwelling unit density objectives of the Canton master plan for this area. Respectfully, Jim and Laura Castillo. Second letter from Douglas Reed to the township board. My name is Douglas Reed. I live at, I'm going to leave out his address. I have lived at my address, he's a neighbor. I've lived at my address for over thirty years and I have watched the new homes grow in the city. Nice, big lots, nice separation, and I am only talking between Ford and Cherry Hill, between Beck and Ridge. Then you let the builders put the sixty-foot lots ten feet apart at Salts and Denton. Looks to me, it's the poorest neighborhood in Canton. Now on Ridge, you are ready to put Meadow Sub on Ridge where all homes are one acre, plus it just. Again, it will just be the poorest neighborhood in Canton. By the way, don't you work for Canton, not the builder? Sometimes I can't tell. I hope you and the board of trustees will consider reconsider changes to this bad decision.
Thank you very much. Is there any additional public comment before I ask Kristen Cold to make a comment? Is there any additional public comment? Any, any raised hands, Michael?
I see nothing.
Now, the, Mr. Castillo obviously has introduced a couple of new thoughts in the latest letter, which I have not seen. It does not mean it was not in my inbox, but the Kristen, you had done a legal opinion based on Mr. Castillo's original interpretation of the overlay district, whether it expired, etc., etc. Based on the additional comments, taking out the emotional piece regarding my very dear friend Melissa. Is there anything from a legal perspective that you can share with the trustees right now in terms of the accuracy of his opinion?
Well, I didn't hear anything from a legal perspective that would change the written opinion I gave to the board. The proposed development, contrary to Mr. Castillo's assertion, is consistent with the master plan and the zoning ordinance. I don't know why he's maintaining this position that it's somehow inconsistent with the master plan. But the master plan specifically talks about the Cherry Hill Village overlay. And this development is consistent with those requirements that are found in the zoning ordinance. In fact, it's less dense than Mr. Golden would be able to make it under the terms of the, the village regulation. So, I mean, this development has been planned for twenty years. The develop, or the, the overlay district regulations have not changed. That's all public information that's been available to everybody. And, you know, the property, the development to the north is not in the, in the village, which is why they were, you know, why they built it so different. But this property is within the district and it's been planned to be developed in this fashion for quite two decades. So with that, I, you know, try to answer any questions the board members may have.
Are there any questions or comments at this time from the board?
I have also promoted project sponsors to panelists as well, so if there are questions. Put that out there.
Any, any questions or comments from the trustees? I see that.
Okay, I'm on. Um, Kristen, I'll start with you. I just, um, I know none of us were here when this was all created. Um, it's interesting to me that the village included parts north of the I T C corridor. Because it makes it really difficult to connect those parts. Walkability, bike riding, I mean, I'm riding my bike through there at least twice a week. And so it's, do you know why, and that area was included, included the village core because, or in the village? Because it seems that there was no real plan to make it connected to the rest of the village.
Unfortunately, I was not here when, when the area was designated. I do know there was an extensive study done of the entire area. And it was determined by the planning commission and the board at that time that it was warranted that the village be extended all the way to that Salts Road border.
It's surprising to me. I'm not sure I've seen this chart and maybe at least not in a very long time. We haven't discussed this area in a long time, except for maybe the lawsuit or the other neighborhood up there.
Yeah, I mean, there was a study done over two, three, maybe even four years before, you know, pens was put to paper to start to design this area and the related regulations.
I, I can't claim to be an expert on it. I know you gave us documents that described the village and everything. But doesn't feel like the village to me. So, but that, I understand legally it's the village, but you know, the look and feel and the abilities, I mean, the concepts of having a park a block away from everybody, being able to have sidewalks that connect you right to the downtown. That's all lacking and is going to be remaining lacking up there. The other comment I have is that in looking at the elevations, the first chance we've had to take a look at the product and the homes. And I, I don't know Mr. Golden and I don't remember, sorry, sir, I don't remember you at least. I know Mr. Priest, he's been coming and I've always enjoyed working with him and seeing his presentations. This product, you guys always make a nice product, but it doesn't feel villagey to me at all. It feels like many of the other fine communities that we have, residential communities we have in Canton. But to me, if you're sort of trying to live under the rules of the village, it should look like the rest of the village. And to me, it doesn't. It doesn't look like even the, the portions of the village, I'm not sure I have diagrams that go south of Cherry Hill Road here, but the, the most southern portions of the village, which have even smaller than the core plots or, or pieces of land. Their product looks villagey. It looks like the village. This looks like a standard northern, you know, standard southern Michigan home. They're, they're nice, but to me, they don't feel like a village. I mean, if you're going to create and, and something in the Cherry Hill Village and try to utilize the rules, it feels to me that we're cherry, cherry picking the rules that we like, but not create, enhancing the village by doing it. I could see this neighborhood and other areas of Canton where you've built other fine developments. But to me, it's not, it's, it doesn't sing out village to me. And combine that with the fact that it, it doesn't help connect this area to the village. I don't even see any like trails in the development that's can somehow connect you downtown. Trying to put sidewalks, I know it's hard. There's, there's, that's why I'm so surprised this area was connected because there's so many private homes that keep you from putting in sidewalks to connect you. In addition, the I T C corridor, have anybody worked or talked to I T C about potentially some way of connecting this area? If it's going to be considered the village down to the village core. Those are my thoughts. I mean, right now, my thinking is I can't approve this based on those things. So that, that's just my thoughts right now. I, I think, I would like to see something built there. I was surprised to learn it was part of the village. To me, it's, it's connecting into the, the subdivision to the west and the north. And it, if anything, it should look like that. That, those are just my thoughts.
Michael, could you share an elevation for us to look at real quick? Or Steve, would you be able to share an elevation?
I, I have it on a separate computer, maybe Jade has it.
What are you looking for?
An elevation, so I can, I want to understand if the, in terms of the curve of.
You know what page of the board packet you're talking about?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, page one fifty?
Yeah, in that, in the one fifties, there's a bunch of them.
Let me share my screen.
Because what I'm, that is, the Cherry Hill Village look is, it's the coloring, the trim work.
Right.
It's the aesthetics, the, you know, trim, it's not the construction.
Can people see my?
Yes, I could see that.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the, this appears to be the product.
Yeah, yeah. So I absolutely agree that, you know, change the, the coloring and the trim and bam, you've got Cherry Hill Village.
Well, I think there's more to, I mean, yes, I'm glad you agree.
Nice margins, yeah.
I think there's more to what makes Cherry Hill Village Cherry Hill Village than, yes, it's part of it, but I think it, it's not as simple as that. But that would be a start is, I would agree with that, so.
And then is there a shot that shows the?
I mean, even, even the stonework, there's very, there's fewer, there's fewer stonework in Cherry Hill Village. So if you're gonna, my point is if you're going to be part of the village, be part of the village.
All right. And then the other thing is connecting to I T C, I think is a brilliant idea. So if we could see, there's village core.
Right above the village core is the whole I T C corridor, that, that horizontal line, that's, that's the power lines there.
Right. So there is an opportunity to have a little path that goes out, I'm sure, you know, maybe not immediately, but over time certainly could put together a pathway.
I mean, perhaps pathways behind those houses that you're wrapping around. I know you're, yet even the neighborhood you're going into in the west does not connect to Cherry Hill Village. It connects over to Napier Road. So it doesn't feel like village to me. That's, that's, that's all I had.
Okay. Mike, if you stop sharing, yeah, there we go, see everybody's faces. Any other comments, questions for either developer or team? Anne Marie, please.
Hi, so we had two planning commission meetings on this. And you can see somewhat in the notes where it talks about, it was a little paragraph where we went around and around on this a long time. And it ended up being tabled that day because of some of the issues of density. And, and even, I mean, we, it does talk a little bit about it here where it talks about, you know, the lots, the proposed lots with certainly 60 feet proposed depth or at least 130 feet. And although the design guidelines call for wider lots primarily located on sites farthest from the village core, this, the meadows is only 300 feet from village core boundary. I mean, so many times we're here and our hands are tied, you know, in the planning commission in here by what was established in the 90s. And this is kind of one of the items because we're, you know, we're seeing two different rulings overlaying here, which is, you know, tying our hands. So we also had in the planning commission, there was a pathway that had kind of gone into this development, which was voted out because some of the residents on either side didn't want that public area there. But I do agree, we need some more pathways going into it. And, yeah, I'm just going to side with, you know, what I think is the same thing with the residential concerns here. And I, I don't agree with those. I just don't agree with the density. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Questions at this time? Go ahead, John or Michael, did you want to?
I can go after John.
I, I'm hap, I'm happy to go last if that's what everybody wants. I don't, you know, you wanted to talk or I could just share some thoughts now.
Yeah, go ahead and share some thoughts, please.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for taking the opportunity to meet tonight. And I understand that this is a hot issue. We do have one member of the community or a couple that are obviously very against this project. And, and I understand it. I, I sympathize with the public. They have a right to, you know, speak their mind. However, I think what we need to do is strip, take a step back here and just look at the overall picture. And, you know, the overall picture is that the density on this parcel is four units per acre. Mr. Castillo keeps referencing 27.04 of the ordinance. And really, he should be referencing 6.09, which pertains to the Cherry Hill Village overlay. And the Cherry Hill Village overlay allows for up to four units per acre. Now, that four units translated to 63 lots for this particular parcel that I could have been a really greedy developer and come in with some astronomical number, but I didn't. We met with Patrick and with Jeff and Evan, and we all came up with something that would make sense, that would actually fit with what's around it. And if you look at what's around this particular area, the landings, Concord Park, the corners at CHV, the ridge, just to name a few, my lots are actually bigger in terms of the size. So Mr. Castillo keeps referencing the width of the lots at 60 feet. But I've given great depth to these lots specifically to give people a lot of yardage, a yard space. The landings right across street is 50 by 110. Concord Park is 60 by 110. The corners at CHV is 60 by 120. The ridge is 55 by 110. This project is 60 by 130. And that, that, the net of that is 2.4 units per acre, which is 40% less than what the density allows for, for this parcel. I think that's a sizable difference. I think we came in with a very conservative number. When we met back in June with the planning commission, we had comments from the public. Yes, as Anne Marie had said, it was definitely heated. It was a two-hour meeting. It got tabled. I took the opportunity to meet with members of the community, including Mr. Castillo. We made some changes. I, I didn't hear back from any other members except Mr. Castillo, who is the sole person that's against this. And then this gentleman, Mr. Reed, who I had never met with, I apologize. But the other folks were appreciative that we took two lots and we eliminated them. We pushed some of the houses back off of Ridge Road to create more open space in the front. They wanted the pathway off of Ridge Road eliminated. They felt it was a security and safety issue. So there's a long road kind of going towards the pond. I was fine taking that walkway out. So when we went to the last planning commission meeting, we, it, it wasn't really so hostile. We went through the changes of the elevations, which I, you know, understand where some of you are coming from. I, I tried to create sort of a hybrid. I'm building your typical brick houses right now in Aspen Ridge, which I've been building for years. These are a little bit more craftsmanship-y. So I would look at it as an opportunity, kind of use it as a segue between what's traditionally done in Canton, which is your, you know, your, your colonial all-brick house with a couple bays in the front and your Cherry Hill Village. And look at it as sort of a nice segue for a craftsman-style house, but still keeping in line all of the porches and things like, like that. And I think, I, I, you know, I certainly can adjust some of the elevations. Some of the colors might not work, but I think that's down the road. But I think the overall look, looks good. I think another point that Mr. Castillo brings up, and he keeps referencing the village edge and the village core. And what we have to recognize, if you go back and look at the map, which I don't know if, here it is, okay? The, the village core is basically only the village theater, the downtown shops and the uptown apartments, from my understanding. Everything else that's residential in Cherry Hill Village, and there's, I don't know, I think 12 or 13 phases. This is, I think, one of the last phases, is all in the village edge. So when we look at the density of every single project that's been developed in Cherry Hill Village over the last 20 years, this has the third lowest density of all of them. And I think, again, I understand where Mr. Castillo is coming from, but it's just not a one-acre district. It's, I don't want to use the word zoning, but it's allowed for four units per acre, which, you know, puts us where we're at. So I, I do think we came up with a fair plan considering what the overlay allows. And, and I also wanted to state my apology for just keep talking here because I have a lot of things, a lot of facts I just want to lay out. Originally, 20 years ago, when, when the village concept was done by Looney Ricks, I forgot their name here. Yes, yes. Back 20 years ago, and you can verify that with Mr. Sloan and Goulet. This particular parcel, you can't probably see it, but Phase 9 called for 40 lots on it, actually. I mean, this was, this was the initial concept that was 20 years old, called for 40 lots on this parcel. And this was actually prior to me acquiring additional land. I acquired about two extra acres. So there was, it actually could have been more density. But this is 20 years old, so the original plan called for 40. So I'm actually, I feel like I'm fairly in line with what was initially planned for it. I get there might be concern about connections and this and that in the village. But, you know, the parcel does fall within the Cherry Hill Village overlay. So I think what we've proposed is extremely fair, actually probably a little bit too fair, to be honest with you. But that's what I had, I wanted bigger lots. I did not want to come in with Pulte 50 foot by 110. I just didn't think that made sense. So I think this is a good in-between. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Michael, did you answer your question or do you have additional comments, questions?
Oh, sure. I just wanted to kind of, my, so you said that there was initially going to be, I'm going to share my screen if I can. And I'll take advantage of being host for a minute. This, you said there was initially a, a path that went this way right here, but that that was removed at the request of residents because of a safety issue?
That's correct, yes. So when we, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. There was originally a path there, but we got a lot of pushback in the planning commission meeting in June. So we, we, we took it out.
Okay. Because I mean, I'll just speak kind of broadly here. I mean, I'm very comfortable with the legal memo we got from our own council kind of discussing the issues that are, that are kind of brought up here. And, you know, I got to say, when you pass an ordinance as a local government saying this is how something should be developed, then you create a plan that says how something should be developed. And you've asked somebody over a tier, you know, and this has been 20 years in the making. And so you, you go to somebody and you say, okay, this has been the plan for 20 years. This is how the ordinance is set up and this is how the plan is set up. Now go ahead and do something. And they come back and they say, you know what? I don't have to comply with the tree ordinance, but I will. You know what? I don't have to have this much open space, but I will. You know what? I, I could go for more density, but I won't. I have a hard time saying, yeah, I'll exercise some discretionary authority here, vote down a project that when somebody is literally meeting all of the requirements that we are reasonably allowed to ask them. I know, I, I talk to residents all the time too. I get the complaints, you know, and to be honest, I'm a naturalist. I like trees, I like open spaces. I love the way Canton looked 20, 30 years ago. And I hear it from all the residents who are upset every time we approve a development. The easiest thing in the world is to say, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to try to shut this down. I'm going to stop this from happening. Or I'm going to try to, you know, to do whatever. But, but in all actuality, we have to follow the law. We have to follow the rules. And just like we ask other people to follow the law and to follow the rules. And what I see in front of us is a project that's followed the rules that we've put in place here. You know, I, I look at the village district in, in general. And it doesn't look kind of crazy to me. It's the pink area right here. It goes a half mile south and for the most part, a half mile north. So it's not really out of the ordinary or weird. And then it extends out this way to the edge of the county line and extends this way, probably based on historic farms. And I don't know and I don't really need to. But this parcel that we're talking about right here doesn't look much different than I imagine these parcels did down here 20 years ago. They've just been developed at this point into the Cherry Hill style. So that part doesn't concern me that much either. I have a hard time understanding that. What I do like the idea of the, of some type of trail, pedestrian trail. And I get that the residents didn't want it on that one parcel or on that one section here, because they didn't want it to thread between two houses. And I understand that this right here is the ITC property. But I wonder if, is, is there a way to do a trail that follows maybe the creek to the north-south? So that in the future, if these parcels ever do, one, if you do get the approval of the I, of the I, of ITC, you could extend it down into the, into the village core to make it kind of walkable. Would that be unreasonable? I don't know, Patrick, is that, I, I mean, it may be weird to have a path that goes nowhere. Maybe it's, you know, maybe that makes more sense.
That was my, what I was talking about when I mentioned it. I agree. And there's a neighborhood to the west of the village factory that has bike paths around their retention ponds.
Right here?
So, sorry. Yep, I've been on those. And, and so some concept like that with a look towards perhaps working with ITC to connect them down underneath to the lower part of the village be a benefit, I think, to make them feel connected. Just my thought.
Would that be, like if we were to approve this, maybe with the condition of adding a trail that goes north-south along the waterway? Would, would that be appropriate or? Or, if we're truly going to exercise the discretionary, because from what I understand outright denial is not a discretionary decision that we would be able to do. We would have to, I mean, isn't it more along the lines of trying to figure out a benefit that's in line with our zoning ordinance, right? So promoting wildlife, public benefit, something along those lines.
I, I think there's a benefit that we all see together to connect the walkability of the area. We, and John Golden nor Canton Township can make a commitment on behalf of ITC. But under the MSD umbrella, in the past, we've developed great relationships with ITC people. And they have come out and worked with us on other trails and paths. So I think I'll do the same here. The function of connecting the parties and, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Priest.
I, I just wanted to speak to putting a path along that, the drain there. The residents along the other side of that, on the other side of the drain from this proposed development had some drainage issues in their backyards with this thing backing up. And we're, John authorized us to do a little additional studying of what, what's going on with the floodplain there. And I think we're going to need, we're going to need to be cutting some space along that drain rather than filling any of it in to build a pathway. So I mean, I, if you think there's a different place on that site that's more appropriate, I, I really don't feel like it'll work very well along that drain. It might cause more problems for the people across on the other side.
But I think, John, Mr. Golden, if you could, you get the point that we would like to try to have as much walkability out of your neighborhood back to the, the main part of Cherry Hill Village. Any way we can get into the ITC from your property cleanly?
I believe not. I probably have to defer to Evan. But when we had early conversations on this, I don't think we were able to connect to the ITC because it's actually on Toll Brothers property. The way the corners meet up, there, there wasn't, it, it's really on them now to, to, we could have connected to something that maybe they connected to. But I think that they have the actual, you know, it's the adjacent to their property, not mine. I, I believe, I, I think that's why we couldn't do, yeah.
So I see Mr. Priest has got his answer for that. Walk between the properties.
We, your property, John, does abut the ITC corridor. The only issue is between your property and the ITC corridor, there's a storm sewer easement that Toll Brothers got for their pond outlet. And what they did was they dug their pond there and they built a big, deep, wide channel that's on John's property, but north of the property line. That, you know, we would have a difficult time crossing to get it 20, 30 feet wide. So what we, the only thing I can think we could do is we could take a walk along the north and west side of our pond and maybe stub it out to the, our west property line, north of that channel. And then could we get an easement from the Toll Brothers subdivision? And then somebody could take it from there where they have, their pipes are underground and you wouldn't have to build a giant bridge. And then, you know, in the event that in the future, somebody could get an easement from ITC, you could get there from that location, basically at the southwest corner of our property.
A lot of moving parts.
Yeah, that sounds. That sounds pretty messy. And you know, Evan, when you talk about. Yeah, when you talk about that property, I'm, I'm familiar with some of the Ridge Road addresses. I've spent some time on those properties over the last eight or nine years. And I have seen what happens in springtime to those backyards. And I think you're 100% right. That actually is a horrible location for a, for a path. That would just get swallowed alive by that water. Yeah.
And we put a path in, we're just going to be filling it in higher and making the problem worse.
And, and, and we've been in communication with those neighbors that brought up those concerns, as Evan alluded to. So we've authorized, I've spent some extra money to do some floodpaints. So we've authorized, I've spent some extra money to do some flood pains, plane studies to make sure that when we get to development, we're not creating more problems with that for them. In fact, we're probably helping to alleviate any issues. And obviously, all that stuff would come out during the engineering phase and whatnot. But we, we want to be a good neighbor. We don't want to create more problems. So we're, we're on top of that particular issue with regards to any flooding or messiness in the back of those, those lots there.
Is there any additional comments, questions from the board at this time? Saying none, call for, roll call vote, please.
Anthony. Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Oh.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
No.
And Williams.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Golden. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much, members of the board. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
That up now, item G seven. Consider approval of special land use and site plan for Western Township's Utility Authority to an expansion.
Supervisor, I move to the board to approve the following resolution for special land use and plan for the Western Township Utility Authority Expansion. Whereas project sponsors requested special land use approval for an essential service and site plan approval. The Western Township Utility Authority Facility Expansion located on the east side of Hagerty Road, north of Michigan Avenue on tax parcel listed pursuant to the information and plans provided. Whereas the planning commission found the proposal to be consistent with the special land use criteria and development objectives of the township and recommended approval. And whereas the township board has reviewed the plans and determines the proposal to be consistent with the zoning ordinance regulations and development objectives, subject to any conditions described in the analysis and recommendation attached hereto and made a part hereof. Now therefore be it resolved, Board Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton to hereby approve the request of the Western Township Utility Authority for special land use and site plan approval on the tax parcel listed as requested subject to all other applicable local and state regulations.
Support.
Okay, the applicant is proposing to expand the existing sanitary sewer equalization and transmission facility with the addition of a fourteen thousand three hundred square feet storage tank, part of which is underground and part above ground. The tank will be located on the northeast corner of the property adjacent to the existing north equalization basin that were constructed by the property adjacent to the existing with, okay, that were constructed with the last expansion. A storm detention system will be added and the landscaping that failed due to poor installation with the last expansion will be restored and enhanced in compliance with the firm requirements. The site has been designed to meet all special land use requirements and adds no additional traffic to the site. The existing wooded areas provide, does provide screening from I two seventy five. And Jade should be able to answer the questions board may have. Are there any questions? We're gonna build another tank to store more waste water. Pretty straightforward, no additional questions. Call for roll call vote.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Item GA, consider approval of contract and purchase order for aquatic management services.
Mr. Supervisor, I'm gonna do this in the form of one motion. I move to award the contract and approve a purchase order to Regiro LLC, two two one one zero Telegraph Road, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three three for the aquatic management services for Canton Township in the amount of thirty four thousand eight hundred twelve dollars to be paid from the account number listed. Capital outlay land improvements and to approve the following, but attached budget amendment.
Support.
In terms of background, Canton Township owns many ponds and outdoor aquatic areas throughout the township. Over time, chemical treatments and daisies have covered and killed algae in our ponds, resulting in a temporary fix to the algae issue. Throughout the years, weeds and algae were treated within the ponds and the remains would settle down to the bottom causing mucky sediment. As the weather became hot and dry, the sediment would create more algae, creating an unhealthy and unsightly pond area. In twenty nineteen, Regiro LLC applied the same treatment to a much smaller pond, okay, at Hole Seven, that's around golf course. And in just two seasons, the treatment proved to be a huge success, motivating staff to continue the process for some of our larger, more visible ponds. And that's what we're gonna do this evening is authorize proceed on additional treatments. And if everybody's been following on social media, it's been quite a buzz lately, the pond condition that the golf course. So this is a move to correct that. Is there any questions for Jade? I'm sorry, Greg, hold on for a minute. This is Greg Shaw. Any questions and comments? Chemical treatments for the ponds make them beautiful again. They seem no comments, questions, call for roll call vote, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, nay. Snyderman.
Aye.
What about me?
Slavens.
Aye.
Ann Williams.
Aye.
Item G nine, consider the purchase of in car body worn camera systems and associated amendment to the twenty twenty police budget.
And I will also do this in the form of one motion if I can. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of a body worn and rocket lot. Lot or, you know, in car camera system in the amount of six hundred sixty thousand five hundred dollars for utility incorporated and approve an amendment to the twenty twenty police budget, increasing the fund balance corporation and capital outlay, computers and equipment accounts both by six hundred and sixty thousand five hundred dollars to accommodate the purchase.
Support.
Police Department is requesting we replace the ring card and body worn cameras with a new system for utility. Proposed system, six hundred and sixty thousand five hundred dollars for eighty body worn and forty rocket T, low T in car cameras and includes all hardware, software, services needed, including installation, training, CGS compliant unlimited cloud storage, as well as support and service for five years. The department is also requesting an amendment to the twenty twenty police budget for this purchase. And Chad, Director Chad Bowes with us this evening, is it low T or lot?
Believe it, they're trademarked. It's, it's a, it's a transfer system. It's in the vehicle, so they trademark it and it's spelled like it is, IOT.
How would, oh, IOT, okay. Very good. Any questions or comments for Chad on the site? Part of our study session, let's go. All right, saying no comments or questions, call for roll call vote on the end.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Okay, that concludes our formal agenda for this evening. Is there any additional board comment at this time? Any additional board comment at this time? Go ahead, Michael.
I just want to, especially, you know, all of you are ambassadors in this community. You have a lot of conversations with people. It's election season. People have a lot of opinions right now. Election management has been drawn into controversy as a part of political campaigning. And so I just wanted to take this opportunity to hopefully that you can help me as ambassadors. Let people know that they can request an absentee ballot. They can do so online. But that we won't get those absentee ballots for about another month. Everyone's very excited. They're very concerned. A lot of people, some people are very concerned about the mail, mail delivery. We, the ballots aren't printed yet. They will be printed. We will be mailing them out the last week of September. And people can look in their mailboxes the first weekend, the first week in October. So if you talk to anybody, they're concerned, why haven't I got my ballot? It's because nobody gets a ballot two months before an election. It's just not how it works. So we'll be mailing those out that first week of October, or they'll, should be hitting mailboxes that first week of October. I'd appreciate it.
Any additional board comments? Any staff comments? Last call for board comments. Saying none, call for motion to adjourn.
I'll second one of those.
Roll call vote to make it formal for the issue.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Good job, guys. Full agenda. Everybody have a good night. Be safe.